Welcome to the regular meeting of council in person and live streamed electronically Tuesday, December 6, 2022, 6:00 PM. Opening of the meeting. So the first thing I'd like to do is recognize today, December the 6th, is the National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women. The National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women is about remembering those who have experienced gender-based violence and those who we have lost to it. It is also a time to take action. Achieving a candidate free from gender-based violence requires everyone living in this country to educate themselves and their families and communities on gender-based violence. Center the voices of survivors in our actions and speak up against harmful behaviors. At this moment, I'd like to do our moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Can you just make more?
Okay, so if we lose connection tonight, we've been having some internet trouble. We will be continuing with our meeting and if we can get you back on, we will for live streaming. Thank you. Sir, adoption of agenda. Moved by councillor Abbas, seconded by councillor Crabtree, that the regular meeting of council agenda dated December 6, 2022 be approved as amended, this date to move item 8A and 8D from information to action items and to include an amended bylaw 3942-2022 to remove a blank item 5 as an administrative error and bylaw 3943-2022 to appoint councillor Abbas and councillor Crabtree to the Recreation and Culture Committee and appoint deputy Reeve Carroll as the alternate. All in favor? Karen. Next would be disclosure of interest now at any point in time and then minutes of our previous meeting, November 15th. Moved by councillor Crabtree, seconded by councillor Kenny, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, November 15th, 2022 be approved as circulated. All in favor? Karen. Any business arising from our minutes? Delegations, at this time, I'd like to welcome Serena Deschamps from KPMG to address our 2022 draft financial statements, please.
Okay, well, thanks for having me here this evening. I know we sent over two documents, so we sent over the audit findings report as well as a copy of the draft financial statements. What I thought I'd do is I'd just go through the audit findings report. It does have some highlights from the financial statements and then if anybody has any specific questions from the financial statements, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll go through every page because we'll be all length and that won't be too exciting. But so here we go, the audit findings report and what we see actually is, so this is our first year as auditors from KPMG for the township, so kind of exciting, big change. The audit findings report looks a little bit different than the previous one, but it contains basically the same information. I want to stop saying. So the new audit partner on for the township is Laura Huber. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it this evening as in fact, we had, I think, four financial statement presentations this evening, so we're all spread out across the county tonight presenting financial statements. So Laura Huber, hopefully she'll be here next year. So the audit highlights, I'll just touch on, I'm not going to go through every line here, but if you can see, I'll highlight here with my arrow. So significant risks and other significant matters. I just want to highlight the good things. No significant findings to communicate related to significance or other significant matters. And also the control deficiencies, we didn't identify any control deficiencies that we determined to be significant deficiencies, no uncorrected differences. And I will say, I read this this afternoon and I think actually we didn't have any adjusting entries to make once we received the final trial balance and all of our contributors. Fantastic job there. And we are independent of the township. I wanted to highlight that as well. So financial statement highlights, so here's our statement of financial position or our balance sheet at December 31st. What we see is we have strong cash position. From prior years, our taxes receive a blur down, which is great to see. We are seeing that across the board as we were gaining the taxes. They did kind of jump during COVID a little and now they're coming back down to more normal levels, as well as the prepaid taxes, we can see right here, has gone up a little bit. So that's the pre-authorized payments amounts coming in. So we have prepaid property taxes there. As well, we've seen this a lot with the deferred revenue, sorry, the obligatory reserve fund. This is basically our development charges that we've collected in the year. So lots of municipalities have seen a big jump in development charges collected because of all of the work that's being done in municipalities. So again, this also, this jump will account for some of the increase in our cash balance. Non-financial assets, so basically those are our tangible capital assets. Additions of $500,000 this year offset by our $595,000 of amortization. We did some work to the septic system at the Rosedale Hall, but I think the largest expenses were the plow truck in the back. Does anybody have any questions on the balance sheet statement? So our financial statement highlights here, net book value of our tangible capital assets. I'm just going to scroll up here. So our net book value, so that's our original cost of assets minus accumulated amortization is $6 million. So we have $6 million in net book value of capital assets. And when we look at the breakdown, we see 53% is linear assets. So linear assets are roads. And then vehicles, so roads about $3 million and vehicles, 1.4 million. Underground networks here, 14% is our water and sewer. That's about $900,000. Kind of like these pie charts are new, so we like popping to those. And then our total reserves, we did see an increase in our reserves from prior year, approximately $400,000. We had an increase from our prior year surplus, so 2020 surplus transferred into reserve and then we used some of the reserves to pay for our equipment that we purchased. Questions on the reserves? So here's our statement of operations. So all of our revenues minus all of our expenses except for our tangible capital assets on this statement, total revenues of $4.8 million, which is basically similar to prior years in our budget. So we like seeing that everything is stable. Expenses are up a little bit, but that relates to some gravel work that we did on some of our gravel roads. Though that gravel work, we don't typically capitalize in this municipality. Any questions on that statement? So again, our operating expenses broken down in a little pie chart, amortization 13%. Again, that's $593,000. And when we talk about amortization, really, we're talking about the current year use of our capital assets. Amortization is based on a percentage of use of that capital asset, but it's based on original cost of the asset. So when we talk about saving for the municipality, we want to think about saving at least our amortization expense for future replacement of our capital assets. So audit risks, there always is an audit risk from management override of controls. So we do test that in our municipal audits and we did not uncover any issues during the performance of the audit. So great result there. And control deficiencies. So this really just outlines significant deficiencies, the definition of it, if we had a significant deficiency in internal control, we would have had a meeting prior to the presentation of the financial statements to discuss that. So you can see at the bottom here, we haven't identified any significant deficiencies that we would need to highlight to council. We did highlight some items for management, which we provided in a separate letter, but again, a significant internal control deficiency that we would need to. And again, no uncorrected or corrected audit statements. I don't think we made even one journal treatment since we got the final package. So I'm just going to skip ahead here to the appendices. So this is our draft auditors report. It's attached to the financial statements that we sent over prior to the meeting. Just want to skip down here. Our management representation letter is just a letter that we received from management that indicates all information we requested was provided to us, that there were no issues with the information that we received. So we did receive that back from management. And then, but I wanted to highlight down here, I know there's a lot in here. But here, this appendix for audit and assurance insights, these are really good links to articles and documents that council could follow, like click on the link. It's actually a live link and we won't click on it. But it's a really good resources if you wanted to look more into some of the topics that are in these appendices. I just wanted to highlight that. So that's all I had for the audit findings report. Again, I'm happy to take any questions on the audit financial statements if anybody has any. Okay, well, thanks for having me here this evening and.
Thank you for coming out. And I think moving forward, you had provided notice that you will no longer.
I will no longer be auditing during municipal audits. I still will be with KPMG and Hert. And so, you know, I'm happy to take calls or questions. I had one client call me a couple of weeks ago just to ask a question. You know, I still know the things I know. I've been working on the, on this particular audit for a lot of years. I know it just met most of you, but, but yeah, so we have lots of history there. So I'm there, we'll be around. And, and the new team members that will be taking over the audit will still have access to us.
Well, thank you from all of us, from staff. It's been a pleasure working with you on the audits in the previous years and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll stop sharing.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Serena. So our next is report of municipal officers, public works manager Steve Rothball on new grader funding options.
Thank you, Chair. I am Stephen this evening. So as councillor recall, they did approve the purchase of a new grader to replace the old grader. At the time, there was a shortage, there was 4,000 or 400,000 in the budget and the grader come in at about 550, $560,000. The difference is presented this evening, we are recommending the use of development charges for a portion, 822, that's what's available to us right now, and the balance 79,000 from equipment reserves. By the end of the year, if we have additional development charges to utilize out of public works, we will bring something forward for year end to utilize more of them because we can use more than the 822 if they're available to us. So that would be the recommendation. But at this time, the, the change would be based off of the recommended this evening. We received a grader, it's here. It's as pretty as a grader can be. So it is going to be a great asset that we'll have for several years. Yeah.
Any questions? So moved by councillor Kenny, seconded by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council approved the use of 82,200 in development charges and 79,000 from equipment reserves for a total of 161,200 to fund the balance of the new grader purchase. And that council declared the 2002 great champion grader as surplus and approved the public works manager to dispose of the asset in accordance with the procurement policy. All in favor? Karen. Our next report is Cook Administrator Acting Treasurer, Recreation and Culture Committee and Terms of reference.
Thank you, Chair. This is, so we did post for additional members for our Recreation and Culture Committee. We received three, four to be appointed in addition to the three members that had put their name back in from the previous meeting. Our current terms of reference call for 10 members of the public. It's going to be difficult to have quorum seven in the event that one or two people or three people maybe can't make it. So the recommendation from staff is to reduce the number to eight and also there to change the meeting times to currently it's every fourth Tuesday at seven o'clock. I currently attend all the meetings as a volunteer, not as a paid physician. And I am also sitting on council where I live and those are on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. So the request is to change it to the fourth Thursday at seven o'clock in the terms of reference as well to, to allow me the ability to still sit on with the group.
Questions?
We can keep, we can keep like an open posting too as well because we're going to keep that extra, sort of that eighth one there, you know, seven are filled. So then obviously anybody in the public during that time can apply and we can hopefully, we can add to as well, right? So.
Absolutely. And maybe once we're back to having quorum and having meetings, people may attend and see what it's all about and maybe they'll get, have interest to come on.
And we can, and we can also go back and bump the number back up. We'll get more interest to it as well. This is just a fluid way of making sure we can keep going.
Yep.
It's fantastic.
Some follow up. So by leaving at eight with only having seven, will it be on a first come, first served if somebody decides that they want to put that their name forward for that extra position? If you're away, we wouldn't be handling that?
So, so my recommendation would be that if there's two or three people put it forcing that our number was 10, that we would bring back the recommendation to council to add everyone and, and welcome them on board. Yeah.
Any other questions? So moved by deputy Reeve Carroll, seconded by councillor Abbas, that council approved the amended terms of reference for the Recreation and Culture as presented this date to change the community members to eight and the meeting time to the fourth Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM. All in favor? Karen.
Tuesday, Thursday?
Thursday? No, it says Thursday, then it's from Tuesday. Sorry. Thursday? It does say Thursday. Meeting time to the fourth Thursday of each month at seven. Thank you. The next one is Cook Administrator Acting Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, Job Description, Pay Grid and Hiring.
Thank you, Chair. So this is being brought forward to replace, I've been currently the acting treasurer doing that job since the beginning of May, I guess. So this is to bring forward a deputy treasurer job description with a pay scale and to post. We wouldn't replace the treasurer. I would maintain the treasury as far as for right now, budget, year end, those type of things. The deputy treasurer would come in, leave, seen the job description.
It's in both sides of it. So I think that's a big part of it. So replacing that is going to be a cost savings to us all, which is going to have the people in place and it is good for succession planning. So it really is kind of puts the staff back to where we're supposed to be. So I think this is, this is a good, a good way of doing it for sure. And I think like now we later, the, the cost savings too as well. And we might have a better chance of finding somebody in the deputy who's trying to find a treasurer with, I mean, there's other places, municipalities in our area that are looking for that right now and paying and looking at substantial money to do that. So I think that's, it's going to be tricky to find somebody.
And as our auditors just pointed out, how there were no adjusting entries required, we have an excellent mentor here to train the person that we're going to bring in to take over. So it's a win-win for us. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. So moved by councillor. Who wants to volunteer to sit in the hiring panel?
Sorry, can I suggest changes to the document here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do I do that right now?
Yeah.
I just noticed that. So like for item B and C, we open with assists, which to me makes it clear that it's a deputy treasurer position. But for every other item, it appears that they would be solely responsible for that item. And is that the case? Or would you sort of be, they would be solely responsible? It's only these two items that we would sort of be meeting and then they would be assisting with?
Yeah. So normally the treasurer would basically be responsible for budgets and year end type of document.
It's like, I would just be concerned that if later down the line, when we go to do the switch over to full treasurer, that just the change in duties wouldn't be like significant enough to like make the justification. Yeah, it's just, yeah, I was just, I noticed the language and it was quite like strong. I just want to make sure that it's not, yeah, a problem later.
So just so councils aware, we're going to post and because of Christmas, I'm probably going to post and have it go until January sometime, just because people may be off of Christmas, they may be looking at some things and maybe we'll apply. So we're probably looking at doing interviews like January sometime, just sort of where it won't be in the next couple of weeks, just because we're off as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So moved by councillor Abbas, seconded by councillor Crabtree, that council approved the deputy treasurer job description and the amended 2022 pay grid as presented this date and that council approved the posting of the job immediately and that council appoint Morgan Kenny to be on the hiring committee as a council member. All in favor? Karen. Next is reports of committees, committee of hall. Moved by councillor Crabtree, seconded by councillor Kenny, that council approved the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of November 1st, 2022 and approved the recommendations contained therein. All in favor? Any discussion? Reports of committee, Merrickham Library Board minutes from October 2022. Moved by councillor Kenny, seconded by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council accept the minutes of the Merrickham Library Board meeting of October 2022. All in favor? Karen. Any questions, comments? We have no petitions. Want to bylaws? First being bylaw 39422, point to members of council to boards. Moved by deputy Reeve Carroll, seconded by councillor Crabtree, that bylaw 3942-2022 being a bylaw to appoint members of council to boards, committees and commissions, we read first, second and third time, pass, sign and sealed the sixth day of December 2022. I have a question for the committee of adjustment. Is there any chance to make it from the odd number or even number, we could add me to an alternate or like as a council members made to make it the odd?
Yeah. So we can approve it to amend it, to add if council wishes to add. Yes.
So we had discussion with reference to committee of adjustment where we added deputy Reeve Carroll. But then there was some concern that perhaps that would always create a defeated vote because it was an even number. So if somebody else is willing to step up, but I can certainly step in as well because.
He's on. So it's on the next bylaw though?
The next one, sorry. Okay. So I'm ahead of one. Sorry.
But we can, but we can amend our motion to amend the next bylaw once we get to it.
Okay, sorry. So I'll go back. So moved by deputy Reeve Carroll, seconded by councillor Crabtree, that bylaw 3942-2022 being a bylaw to appoint members of councils, of council to boards, committees and commissions, we read a first, second and third time, pass, sign and seal the sixth day of December 2022. All in favor? Karen. So council caught me confused. Yeah. Okay. So, so the next one is 3943, appoint citizens to boards and committees.
So this one, you're going to the bylaw, being a bylaw to men, statutory positions as amended this date to add.
Okay. Karen Jennings. So moved by councillor Crabtree, seconded by councillor Abbas, that bylaw 3943-2022 being a bylaw to appoint members to boards, committees and other statutory positions as amended, this date to add Karen Jennings to committee of adjustment, we read a first, second and third time, pass, sign and seal the sixth day of December 2022. All in favor? Okay, Karen. Bylaw 3944-2022 site plan agreement, right? Moved by councillor Abbas, seconded by councillor Kenny, that bylaw 3942-3944-2022 being a bylaw to authorize the registration of a site plan agreement with Norma Wright, the owner of property described as part of lots 29 and 30 concession to Township of Montague, County of Lanark, being part five on 27R9591, we read a first, second and third time, a pass, sign and seal the sixth day of December. All in favor? Notion and notice, notice of motion, there's none correspondence, we moved items, so we go to actual item. So we moved items 8A and 8D forward. Anybody? That's me then? Yeah. So, sorry. I was looking to see you because I thought you did as well. So you go ahead.
First one, yeah, sure. Yeah, really, it's a, basically it's, we do our livestock claims. We are basically underpaid for it, for lack of a better term. Because I mean, it's, it's, we're only getting $50,000 back. We actually pay over 80 to make sure that we're actually getting somebody and we're doing it. This is really just to support Tate Valley, but through the Highlands too as well to see if we can get a little bit more of that, basically that raise, which some places only pay that. But I mean, like, and it'll help us or maybe even bridge that gap a little bit as well. So it's just a good support to, to give me a little bit more money for the livestock claim back.
So moved by councillor Kenny, seconded by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council support the resolution provided from the Township of Lanark Highlands regarding OMAFRA Ontario Wildlife Damage Compensation Program Administration Administrative Fee and that this resolution be circulated to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO and all Ontario municipalities and to the local MP and MPP. And that this resolution be circulated to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, and all Ontario municipalities and to the local MP and MPP for their consideration and support. All in favor? Carried. Eight D, uh, the action item is just to recognize Stephen Rathwell, who's not here tonight on his CRS designation. For, uh, can he road super? Superintendent?
Certified road superintendent.
So yeah, so it was just congratulate Steve, but he wasn't here for us. But anyway, congratulations anyway. Okay. So at this point, we move to. Right. So because we've, we've no unfinished business. So. Before we go. In camera.
We're going to recess and go to committee of the whole.
I'm going to ask your questions for sure. So any questions from the audience? Tom?
I have one question and one comment. On the auditor's report there. Under, on page forty-five of the. It's got user fees. For revenue for the township, for four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Are the user fees? That are that high, the town to collect? Is that for the wire or the auto or?
No. User charges. So those are basically any of the additional like that's building permits, that's all the other fees that we charge, planning, zoning, all of those things combined in one. It's, it's fees and charges for. Printing for all of those things. It's all in one line item. Um, on that for their reporting. It's not water. Water is a separate line.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other comment was, since now that you're going to. Buy people on committee of adjustment. Maybe you're going to have to look at the users or what they charge. Or because the, the person asking for the minor variance has to cover all costs. So you're going to have to ask for more money upfront because now you've got more expenses. You're going to pay two more people on the committee.
Yeah. So sorry, Chair, just through you, we're going to be looking at all of our planning fees for the new year because we're substantially undercharging on a lot of things. Um, and holding larger deposits than necessary if the fees were more accurate. So we do hold deposits. So even if something is over, um, it goes into that, but we will be looking at all of the fees for planning, um, coming in the new year. So we'll take that in.
Yeah, you are increasing an awful cost. To a person who wants a minor variance.
Potentially depending, yes.
Well, yeah, you've got, you've got to pay for five people on the committee.
Yeah. So currently we don't charge them the committee fees. We don't currently charge that to them.
Well, I thought. I thought when I read it, they had to.
Currently they have not been being charged that. So that's what I'm saying. We're looking at the whole thing and coming back.
Does need revision.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? Phil, take that with the first story. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, it's nice to see our new raider here, but, um. I heard that, I think it's Smith Falls or some other municipality called New Raider or Snow Power or whatever. And they had kind of a little bit of a fun, uh. Uh, competition to come up with a name. I'm just wondering if, if you thought about maybe having the same. Come up with an interesting, we, the public could come up with an interesting name for the new raider. Just a comment. I think with Smith Falls actually just did it very recently.
It was a person, person. So there's no problem.
Oh, I appreciate this. Thanks.
Sure, and our assistant Grace heard that. She's probably thinking of.
Maggie? Um, I had a question regarding the terms of reference for the committee, recreation committee. It's as you pass it, it's probably better than I bring it up. At the next recreation meeting. Right? You. You can say it now. I don't. In, in the terms of reference, we had discussed before about having our meetings here. As opposed to Rosedale. So nobody had to put down and open the hall. Get out the chairs and tables, close it all up again. And since we are a smaller committee. This is probably a fine sized room for it. And also there's a thing in there about. Um, a secretary. Agendas and minutes shall be prepared by the secretary of the recreation. We never really had a secretary. And the minutes that we tried to do worked very well. So should that be elected again, or should, would that go back on to staff?
Speak to it. So I currently do, I know you guys sent me some things. I currently do all the agendas anyways, revise them all, do all the minutes, do all the resolutions in our iCompass. So I've been doing that as a volunteer to the group. And as far as the office, I find this is potentially small if we're going to have a group. And if I'm attending the meetings anyways, nobody has to go and open it because I'm there to open it. Um, and it just allows more space for. Hopefully additional volunteers and more people to come. Um, I mean, the group is more than welcome to discuss that. It's just in the event that I'm not there, no one's going to have access to this building. So then your meetings won't happen at all. Whereas if it's over there, then the custodian will let you in. So you're really.
Have to worry about having a secretary there.
No, because I'm, I've been doing it anyway. So, yeah. So, so I've been doing those things. So I think that with our iCompass, uh, system is. Pretty easy. Um, so we, we can continue to do that as staff. I know it's not all in there, but we'll continue to. To kind of do those things.
Yeah, thank you.
Randy, can I follow up and just say, well, then thank you, Alison, for everything you've done for us in. Previous and going forward. We really appreciate that.
And you missed a really good Saturday.
I know, I'm sorry.
Yes, kudos to the. Merci for the Santa Claus parade, to the volunteer firefighters and everybody that did come out. It was fabulous.
And to a wet Santa and Mrs. San. Windy anyway.
Yeah.
Windy.
So do we have any questions from the audience? Grace, any questions?
There are none.
And I have one. Okay. So at this point, moved by deputy Reeve Carroll, seconded by councillor Abbas, that council recess at. Six thirty-nine PM. All in favor? Carried. Switch over to. When you let it in, Jeff does. Oh, please, Chair, remember, switch.
They got one minute break here.
Okay, yeah. One minute break. One minute break. Okay.
We're good. Hi, everyone, this is, uh, exciting, because I get to chair the committee of the whole meeting, uh, I get to do this once, uh, when we decide to do this in the last council, and unfortunately, this, uh, thing that happened for two years, the last two years, kind of got in the way, so it's kind of fun to be able to, uh, to get the jeans again. Uh, so I'd like to open our meeting with the adoption of the agenda, so moved by Councilor Abbas and, uh, seconded by Councilor Crabtree, that the Committee of the Whole Agenda Dated, uh, December sixth, two thousand twenty-two be approved. All in favor? This time, I'll ask if anybody has any disclosures of interest. Uh, we have no delegations at this time, uh, and right now, the report on the municipal officers, we have the Perk Administrator on the Rosedale Hall pianos.
Thank you, Chair. So you will see in front of you this evening, we have a small storage area at Rosedale, um, kind of off to the side, and we keep our tables and our chairs in there, and the group did a great job of cleaning that all out, and, uh, we disposed of some broken things, some old things, um, and, and Public Works thankfully came over and picked it all up and, and moved it all for us. Whenever we were doing it, though, we noticed that we have a piano on the stage currently, and then there was two in the back. Um, now, our previous Reeve, uh, Bill Dobson did provide me an update on one of the pianos, that it's a player piano, um, and that it was donated to the township, so it is the township's. The other piano, we're not sure if it's the township's or where it came from, um. It may actually have gone missing out of the hall at this point, I'm not really sure. So at this time, we're recommending, just based on the limited space that we have, and that we have several pianos, that we potentially offer the pianos that are not going to be in use to the community, if somebody would like one, um, to, to take free of charge.
So yeah, is, uh, open for discussion, any questions?
No plans for doing, you know.
Well, apparently, the player piano plays itself.
So you can like have a human versus machine.
Yeah, apparently, but it's, they're in poor condition, so they would need some work, but somebody probably would really like to maybe get that piano and maybe restore it and, and give it a home that's gonna be valued in and not sitting in a back corner somewhere where it's getting bumped with everything.
Yeah, I mean, it's that in that, uh, dusty back room for sure, and, and, uh, like, I mean, kudos to the, the group that basically put in there to clean the upstairs, the downstairs, the the side stairs, everything else, it's, I mean, that, that hall, uh, looks fantastic, and, uh, I mean, it's, it's organized, it's clean, when you go upstairs, it's organized, it's clean, everything's been away. I mean, just kudos to that team, because it's just, it just looks fantastic, so, so well done to everybody that was doing that too as well, looks good for Christmas now too as well. Uh, so it's nice to have a very lively-looking, uh, like, uh, hall, so it's been fantastic. So, uh, if there's anything else, then, uh, this will be moved by Councilor Crabtree and seconded by Councilor Kenny. The council approved and, uh, declared surplus of the two pianos in the storage room at Rosedale Hall, and that staff posted two of the pianos on Rosedale Hall that are being unused on social media for a donation at any community member, organization that may wish to take them. So, in favor? The next one is basically the, what, the calendar, yeah, the Perk Administrator with the, the calendar.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So this is the, um, tentative calendar for twenty twenty-three. Uh, it will be approved as amended as the January, or July one stat is missing from July, the Monday, July third, that the office will be closed. Um, other than that, it's tentative, as everyone knows, council can add meetings, remove meeting dates, but this will be the tentative schedule for twenty twenty-three set forward.
Fantastic, any questions? Yeah, nicely laid out, everything else, so that's great, so, uh, moved by, uh, Councilor Kenny, and seconded by Councilor Abbas, the council approved the two thousand twenty-three meeting calendar this date to include the office closure of July third, twenty twenty-three, for the July first, twenty twenty-three statutory holiday. All in favor? And there's no reports of committees, we have no petitions, we have no motions or notice of motions, uh, no unfinished business, and we have any questions out there? Speak now, oh, Mr., uh, Reeve Dobson, ex Reeve Dobson.
You know, just about the, uh, the player piano. Um, I, I also, if somebody happens to be interested in the piano, um, I do know of someone else, and that's myself, who has the actual um, reels, I'm not sure what they're called, but the little reels that goes with the piano.
The player piano?
Yes, so, but that, because it plays on its, by itself, you have to put the wheels in. But I just wanted to comment about that, and then because you're talking about, uh, cleaning the room in behind itself, I just wondered, my question is about, uh, what, uh, has, has anything happened to the big pine cupboard that's in there?
The big pine cupboard is still there.
Okay, just to let you know, that's probably the only piece of furniture that you could actually say is connected to this municipality. This, that is the original pine cupboard from the eighteen-sixties with this township. So it should, I, I feel it should never leave the township. But I also feel it's pretty important that if you're gonna do something with it, you're gonna restore it, it should be restored properly. So not, don't get somebody in there with, with. So, if, you know, I'm just, that's, that was just my comment.
It's still there.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think that's, 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 that's great information, uh, and obviously, Ellie's taking that to us all, because we obviously don't want to then have it thrown out, so I think that's, especially if it's been there for that long, uh, that's great, and also for everybody out there too as well, if you decide to take that player piano, you can, uh, go see Mr. Dobson, and you'll show how it works and, uh, and give you some tapes, and whoever you want to call those things, and, uh.
Look at this, one side of that cupboard, it has the original black red grating on it. That, that's the finish that would have been put on that cupboard would have made in the eighteen-sixties. The rest of it got overpainted or whatever, but even to have that on one side, if you, if you were gonna have it restored properly, there are people that could restore that whole cupboard, make it look like that one original side.
Awesome, uh, oh, that's for the question for Tom, so Tom's.
Uh, just on that cupboard, I wonder if council should look at putting a, a plaque on it. So future councils in twenty years, of, the people that know the history of it will be gone, and if you don't have a plaque on it, who's gonna know, and they're just gonna throw it out?
Chair, through you, I have a note to do that. I wrote down to make a note, because as soon as some of those people leave and, and people change over, you forget, or nobody knows what it was, similar to the pianos. Um, so, so I have a note for us to label that, yeah.
I think a lot of us might be now interested in that, except we go there. It spurred a bit of interest there.
Although, actually, the second, you know, just a question of maybe looking into the school to see if they, they might be interested in. Music for brands, so, I'm taking a hit in the educational field. It'd be nice to maybe see something like that put to students in education, too. If they're interested.
They start with their, you know, according to Bill Barber.
It's tricky, because, I mean, space is always a, a, uh, an issue in schools, and, I mean, a lot of them have gone to a smaller, digital style that, you know, takes up less room, it's heavier, it's, or less, I mean, lighter, and, uh, less of a, yeah, so I mean, zero to two and all that kind of stuff, so yeah, it's, uh, yeah, great idea, though.
I'm old school.
Yeah, oh, it's great, that's the, uh, and hopefully, and hopefully, we have people out there that, you know, are, are looking for a, uh, piano in their, um, in their home, so it'd be great, so we'll we'll put it out there and see what happens, so.
It's hard to get rid of it, because I even tried to get rid of it, and it was a beautiful piano.
Yeah, yeah.
I had to get Ian Street and his brother, and he lifted it up the back and cut it up.
Yeah, they were very thankful today, yeah. That's awesome, all right, so, oh, I don't have, sorry, any questions from Grace at all, or, uh?
There are none.
Fantastic. Uh, so I don't have a, we were to second here, so I need a, a move by by Councilor Abbas and seconded by Jenny. Uh, the Committee of the Whole Meeting for December sixth, two thousand twenty-two now be adjourned at six fifty-two PM. All in favor?
That's records.
So that was, uh, a very quick and easy first, uh, Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is fantastic, maybe, Ellie, I'm sure it'll get heavier as we go. And, uh, now we'll switch over to, yeah, to bring back into, uh, to go into camera, right, so we'll do a quick switch here.
Moved by Councilor Abbas and seconded by Councilor Crabtree, that council reconvene at six. All in favor? Carried. So, in camera. So moved by Councilor Crabtree, seconded by Councilor Kenny, that this council moves into closed session at six fifty-four PM as per section two three nine two of the Municipal Act SO two thousand one, in order to address two items. Item one, IT upgrade security, two three nine two, a meeting or part of a meeting may be closed to the public if the subject matter being considered is the security of the municipality or local board. Item two, property standards, fire and building code property issue, two three nine two. A meeting or part of a meeting may be closed to the public if the subject matter being considered is personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. All in favor? Carried.